Good evening. I just wanted to address a couple of things that were said. First and foremost, everyone knows who I am, but Julie Giordano, County Executive. First and foremost, County Council, I have, we have yet to see Mr. Mitchell's written opinion yet. So, Mr. Wilbur has very graciously given you his. It has been posted on our website. We are fully transparent. So, my suggestion would be if Mr. Mitchell does have an opinion, it would be nice for all of us to see it because we've yet to do that. Mr. Benson also stepping into this, I feel sorry for you. You were kind of thrown into a mess, but I think it would be very beneficial for you and Mr. Wilbur to sit down to have a full conversation so you can actually hear both sides of where we're coming from. Shane, you mentioned Mr. Mitchell would have been representing you had he had been here. But if you look at Mr. Mitchell's bill that was actually requested from a public information request, it showed that Mr. Benson was actually contacted as early as July 12th for his opinion and help on this. Mr. Mitchell was heard in mid-August. So, a month before, Mr. Benson had been contacted on this. So, I just wanted to clarify that. Also, Ms. Hurley, you said that the council's $150,000 for council was not for legal, but yet Mr. Holloway is on record stating in a budget meeting that the $150,000 was in case the executive sued us. So, I just wanted to make sure that you understood that. Ms. Shani, you keep talking about qualifications of these people. Heather Langford is a 16-year engineer, civil engineer degree, and she is in an acting role of Deputy Director of Public Works. Mr. Bunky Luffman and Wayne Strasburg are running Public Works as the directors right now until we find someone. Acting roles do not have to be confirmed by the county council, period, Deputy Director and below. The only role that you have in acting is to extend anybody in a director role, Deputy Director and below, and 14 different examples were sent to you that you do not have the authority to confirm or reject acting roles. That is my role as the executive. Shane, also, to answer your question, if this bill goes into effect with no court movement on 11/5, Heather will go back to being an engineer as she is in the county. So, don't worry, Mr. Holloway, if she designed something, she is a certified engineer, so we won't get sued. But Matt will just be another employee that this council has run out, added to the list of Weston Young, Nick Rice, and Dallas Baker. He'll just become another number. Joe, again, Heather is a hired engineer, so I think that we'll be safe that we know lawsuits. And Shani, last thing, I agree, it is crazy that I have to come to council to ask for an attorney to sue you. But that's what the charter says I have to do. And so, I follow the charter, and that's what I've done this entire time, is follow this charter, followed by the opinion of Mr. Wilbur. I know we don't agree on the opinion. I understand that. You guys have your thoughts on it, I have mine. I'm an English teacher. I broke down what that sentence says, and it doesn't say what I think the intention was. But anyway, I don't want to take up any more of your time, but I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Giordano.
Hello, everyone. My name is David James. I am a resident of Waukesha County, and I represent the West Side. I'm a little sweaty now because I just ran home from the hospital where my mom is at, but I told her at 7:00 o'clock, visitation was over, and the county's important. Listen, I've talked to several of you. Ms. Shane, I love talking to you. I really do. And I know you have a heart for change. We've talked about city and county issues. You have a heart for change. Listen, everyone, let's get past this. I don't want, nobody wants to see this go national, okay? This isn't DC. She's not Donald Trump. You're not Congress. Seriously, listen, and I don't know, I know, I get that this is bigger business than what I'm used to, but what I've done in years past is, as a manager, I hired people. And after a course of time, if that person was not qualified, no personal, you know, nothing against them, they're gone. We have spent nine months, I don't know how much you all get paid per month, don't care. Don't know how much those that have been in active positions are getting paid per month. But to start over with someone new, and the fact of there's a lot of things that are behind that has not been addressed, has not been addressed. Look, there's an increase in crime on the west side of this county, down in the places we never needed the police, but now we do. But we can't address that because we want to fight over HR. Didn't you hire someone in charge of HR? Come on, guys, legislate with me. Legislate for this county. So, my mom could feel better. I reached out, I'm gonna call you Sister Shani. I called, I reached out to you for some for my mom and for my sister. You responded like that. Thank you. I was told during political season by those in here that I've worked with, I'm looking at them, they're not looking at me, that I can reach out to you anytime. I've reached out. I've asked for interviews. Yes, the interviews I do are going to be impartial, looking to do one with you, but nobody wants to talk. Yes, you said give you a call first. Julie, you did do one. Thank you. Be transparent like you said you were gonna do when you were running for office. Seriously, because elections coming up again, don't come be nice to us in another year when nothing's done. Do something and let your work speak for you, just like these people need a chance to. God bless, have a great one.
Thank you, Mr. James.
You're welcome.
Well, my wife and my mama said I'm not one for having the best timing in the world. Carl Anderson Jr., blessed to represent you all in the Maryland House of Delegates. I'm here for something totally different. Budget season's coming in Annapolis, and I know there's a lot of things going on right now inner governmentally, but I'd like to, I know I'm asking this right now, but I'd like to have a meeting with, and I've spoken with the county executive about this, with the county executive, the council president, council vice president, yes, I'm asking that now, to talk about budget priorities, to make sure that when I'm in Annapolis later this month for budget meetings, that I'm asking for things that both branches of government are well aware of and either agree, or if they don't agree, at least they both know what each other's asking for. I've gotten requests from the council, I've gotten requests from the executive. I'd like to put those together to make sure we're all on the same page. This budget, it's gonna be very tight. It's gonna be a different world in Annapolis now. Governor Moore's come out and said he's gonna have to say no to things. I want to make sure he ain't saying no to our stuff. He can say no to everybody else, not ours. So, I just want to get in there early, but I want to make sure that I'm sitting down, so I'd like to sit down with the council leadership and the executive as soon as possible to make sure we're on the same page. And that's about it. It's good to see candidate, candidate for mayor, council candidates from the city in here. I think it's great to see municipal officials, as a former municipal official, take advantage of being a part of the county process because you have to work hand in hand. So, continue doing what you're doing. It's good seeing that. I'd like to see more folks from municipalities in here as well, and I just think it's good to have that willingness to work together. So, you guys enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Christopher Staples, Waukesha County resident. I'm not a politician. I'm retired. However, I've been following the Circus Act ever since it started. The thing you should have done tonight to save me as a taxpayer money was table it. You've both agreed that you're gonna abide by the judge's decision, so why cost me more money as a taxpayer to even bring up budgeting $150,000 for her? Go to the court. Let the judge decide. This is ridiculous. You contradict yourself at one point that you don't want to have the ability, you don't have the ability to pick and choose, but you're picking and choosing. She had two people that she wanted, and now you're picking and choosing, and you're eliminating those positions. And I really wish I'd have taken up a different career in my life and became an attorney because both of those positions, I would love to represent them in a wrongful lawsuit for eliminating their positions. You are eliminating funding, it is essentially firing them, and you're opening yourself up for a major lawsuit for Waukesha County for lost wages and wrongful termination. I don't think any one of you has thought of that, except for Mr. Winn. He was the only one at the, at the last meeting that decided he wanted to table it. However, Mr. Cannon decided to talk him out of tabling it and making a motion. So, I'm telling you now, if it doesn't straighten out, I'm gonna be a politician, and I'm gonna take one of your seats. I will knock on every door in Waukesha County, and you will lose it. I am tired of this. This is ridiculous, all over it. And not only that, you voted to eliminate it. So, when you bring it back, who are you planning on appointing if you had two qualified people? Not only that, if I'm looking for a job, the last place that I want to come to is Waukesha County for anything, to see how screwed up this is. I get appointed, I have a job, now I don't have a job because council decides they don't like me, and they're gonna eliminate my money. So, now I'm out of a job. All of this is absolutely insane. So, if you guys have issues with the county executive, the county attorney said you're wrong. So, me as the employee that's gonna lose his job, he's gonna be my first witness. And you guys, I hope, can get sued personally for this whole ordeal. And every single one of you that voted yes gets money taken out of your own pocket over this stupidity.
Thank you.
Let me add, Mr. Giordano, I've had about a 15-minute conversation with her in maybe a half hour since she was elected. She did not ask me to come here tonight. I'm not here on her behalf, just because I've heard that in previous.
Good evening. My name is Maryam Ashanti. I'm a resident of Waukesha County. Also, for 45 years, have served as human rights and civil rights activist and community advocate. One of the things over the years that we've done is advocate for all of the community, especially those that are underserved. I heard someone said that District 1 has expressed concerns about whatever. If District 1 had concerns, they would have told Councilwoman Shani Shields their concerns, or we would have known about it. So, that's not true. The other thing is, and I'm got before myself, I want to praise, pray that God bless everyone that entered this building. And I pray, I praise the county council for upholding the charter and being serving leaders. I'm hearing people talk about Mr. Holloway. In life, people may say something that you don't agree with, they may even say the wrong thing, but Mr. Holloway has not done anything in the years that I've known him that he needs to be removed or to go before ethics. The other thing is, I hear people say that those positions are being taken away from those two people. How can you take away something that you've never had? Only in Waukesha County government can you work in a position that you're not supposed to be in when the county council said that you do not meet the criteria. That doesn't have anything to do with who lacks who. This body said that those two people don't meet the criteria. Therefore, those two people should not be walking in this building, should not be getting any of our tax money. So, you voted right. I didn't want to come here today. Mr. Benson, I'm just meeting you. Thank you for your service tonight. And I thank all of you, the six of you, that remembered that you are here to serve the people of Waukesha County, not your party and not the county executive. You are to do your job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shani.
I'd just like to add one more thing.
If you're gonna, Jimmy, favorite, you need to get the mic. Yeah, we'll let Ms. Brooks talk first, and you can come back. Thank you.
Good evening. Monica Brooks, Waukesha County resident. I just wanted to say, from my seat, what Mary Ashanti said, ditto. The, I think what's, what's important for us to think about is, as I've even looked over this whole situation, this back and forth, and who's done what, and who's right, and who, whatever, everything is getting lost in the middle, what really counts, the people and the citizens. We're down here boots on the ground, dying, can't eat, no sidewalks, people can't, no transportation, you know, all kinds of horrible situations that are going on that are real-life situations, food deserts, you know, all of these things, and we are arguing at the expense of the public. Now, with that said, I too am in agreement that it's most important for us to stick to the charter. If this is how the charter says, what the charter is, then let's stick with the charter, and then we can, people can circle back afterwards and present something new or come back in a different perspective. But I don't think things should be taken so personally, because that's what I'm hearing. It's all personal. It's not about us as, as individuals, it's about the community. And we are put in positions of leadership to represent the community at our own sacrifice. That's the decision that we make. We're gonna miss some games for our kids, we're gonna miss some, some important situations, we're making sacrifices, you're being here, not just here, but you guys have meetings on top of meetings, I don't even know how many meetings you have, all of that, all of that time and expense could be utilized in a more, in a much better way. And so, if at the bottom line, it's about, well, I wanted to do this, and you guys didn't want to let me, didn't want to let me do this, it's ridiculous. Then come on back around and don't force something in because this is not how I wanted it to be. And let's not keep arguing about it as opposed to, why don't we just do what the charter says? Because you know we have charter amendments, things that can be done through the charter. But it seems to me that this is coming from a very personal space, and it's not right. We are not paying our taxes for this, we are not giving our money and time for this. I almost didn't even come because I was like, a friend of mine was like, oh, it's gonna be a you-know-what show, and I was like, probably. And it has been over the period of time, but I'm just saying, let's just get to a place where we're back serving the community in the best way possible, that we are showing ourselves to be professionals and setting good examples for people, something that people can look up to and aspire to, as opposed to going, oh, my gosh, what the heck is going on? Thank you.
Ms. Brooks.
So, Christopher Staples, Waukesha County. I got two things to add. One, I emailed every single one of you in regards to this matter. The only one that sent a blanket email back was Jeff Merritt, and it was probably one that he sent to everybody. If you're here for the citizens, you should be responding to it. I don't care if you got a secretary, whatever. None of you responded to it, period. Secondly, it would be nice to have the county executive have an actual spot here where she got up and it was a report from the county executive on a monthly basis, instead of her having to come to the stand for two minutes to just correct everything. If you had a report from the county executive, it would be right there, done and over with.
That can be requested by the executive at any time.
I've seen you live there.
I don't have anything profound to say. I would just wish that everybody in this room could be clear about what this one disagreement is. If the charter says that the county executive has to follow a certain pathway to nominate somebody for a position, then that's what the charter says. And it seems like, unless I'm misunderstanding, and I've tried so many times to clarify this, but it seems it never gets to clear, gets clarified here in the room. But the county charter has to be followed, and then if it's amended, if it's changed, then something will be done differently. But in the meantime, it has to be followed, and the people who need to follow it need to do the right thing to get whatever it is they want. Thank you very much.
I'm TJ Mumford from Waukesha County, Salisbury, Maryland. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. As I observed in some previous sessions and somewhat in this session, I can imagine my parents giving me this advice. My mother would say, consider the source. How credible is that source and that speaker? My father would tell me, never give in to bullies. Loudness and rudeness, and it should not intimidate you. I am proud that the council has not been intimidated and is considered the source. You have demonstrated to me true leadership. You've abided by the charter, adhered to the code, and governed under the rule of law. You've modeled leadership by listening to opposing views without demeaning the person expressing them. Your leadership is also evident in the years earned in the county at AAA or AA+, with standard and pores, and AA with Moody's. Your leadership is demonstrated in your understanding of how to make decisions and how to preserve the quality of life in Waukesha County. You have personal integrity, and that is, it's obvious that you are serving in an unselfish manner. My understanding is that as a council member, you don't make any more than $25,000 for the year. Members of the council in your own businesses, you participate in nonprofit activities, you honor veterans and their families. And to my knowledge, the members have honored their commitments. I know of no current county member who's ever had their salary garnished for non-payment, ever had a property foreclosed on, or ever declared bankruptcy. You've met your obligations personally. You as a group demonstrate what leadership is, and you put all those actions in practice. It is true that public relations is, ship is, public relations is an important part of communicating. That is, if the fact, if the information is factual and not half-truths. It reminds me of the Wizard of Oz. The wizard stood in back of the curtain and made false and misstatements of facts. The wizard might say, I got the county employees a 6% raise. You pull back the curtain, the wizard submitted a 3% raise to the council, Councilman Baker and Merritt requested a 6%, and it was passed. I brought a multimillion-dollar developer to the shore, the wizard says. Look at the trees are gone, the sheriff's department is there. Pull back the curtain. That began under Bob Cawthorn and other council members, other councils. The wizard says, $3.5 million granted at the airport. Pull back the curtain. That came from Governor Cogan. Just because the sun rises in the morning, that does not give the wizard the right to take the credit. The Wizard of Oz was exposed to be and found to be full of bravado and misstatements. Just as in the Wizard of Oz, the council, you have shown that you have brains, you have heart, and you have courage. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cawthorn.
I'm sorry, I neglected to give my title, Monica Brooks, Waukesha County President of NAACP.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Any other comments?
Good evening. Robert Taylor, 52-year resident of this county. It's a hard act to follow tonight, particularly Mr. Mumford, but I'll try. I'm not an English teacher, but I did get a law degree 50-some years ago, happens to be from the same law school as Mr. Wilbur. I've seen his opinion, and I will say that I do not agree with it based on the facts as I understand them. I've looked into this to some extent. I have read the suit that's been filed. You can get a copy of it across the street for a few bucks. So, I'm basically in the camp of Mr. Benson and I think Mr. Mitchell. Doesn't mean we're right, but it's not, it's not clearly, I think, the way Mr. Wilbur has opined. That's just my view. Now, I think there's some other things that need to be discussed here, and that is, and he hit on them with his Wizard of Oz analogy, and that is what the county executive has done, Ms. Giordano. She's essentially tried to pull a fast one on the charter. That's where all this starts. Started back in the spring when she asked council to hold a, or council held a closed work session on, I think that was Mr. Lightzel. And then, that was not in an open session. Then she tried to pull the idea that, oh, I really was asking that you do something in an open session then. Now, as I read the facts, that it just is not the case. So, that's where it starts, and that's where I think all of her acolytes who have spoken tonight need to realize. All she had to do was follow the charter. And it's very clear how it's been done. It's been mentioned tonight, 35 or 39 other appointments. If you go back over the three years that I was the council's attorney, it's probably 100. And you send a letter or an email to the council saying that I'm appointing Joe Blow to XYZ, and I'd like to have it confirmed. And it goes on, usually at the next council meeting, and that's how it's done. That's how it was done when she reappointed Mr. Wilbur this year. That's how it was done when she appointed Mr. Luffman. I've seen the emails, they're public. So, I mean, let's face it, that's the situation here, and it's been blown way out of proportion by some acolytes. And they know who they are, and we all do too. Now, I didn't really come here to speak at length on that tonight, I've only got 24 seconds left, but I think the situation we're in requires some consideration of the county executive system. And I think it's time we look at that again and frankly, get rid of it. And we can do that next year, 2024, in the general election. It has to be done in stages. You can't just do it at the end of the executive's term because there would be another election coming on then. So, if you want to get rid of it, you still need to start planning now because the charter has to be rewritten, and that has to go to the public at a referendum, and that could be done next year, with the term, her current term ending two years thereafter. And that's what I'd suggest you all start considering. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other public comments?
I'm Mary Hudner of Salisbury. Good evening, Mr. Cannon and council members, and I'm not gonna take a minute. TJ Mumford and, I'm sorry, Mr. Taylor, I said what I was going to say. And I just want to add that there aren't many people in this county who are willing or able to do what these council members do. So, I suggest that we give them the support they need to continue the good work that they are doing for all of us. Thank you.
Speaker. Any other comments? Seeing none, council comments. Shane?
Yes, I typed mine out so I wouldn't run my mouth for a half hour because I read the minutes, and it seemed like everything's, Shields said this and said that, and I said all that. I couldn't believe it when I read the minutes. I've put, I said, with this controversy between the county executive and the county council has made the Waukesha County residents victims. Issues such as affordable housing, not just rental, but affordable homeownership, homelessness, which is out in the county, the people living in RVs, they're living in sheds, needs to be addressed. Crime prevention measures. You know, we had a mass shooting in the county, 14-year-old youth was killed, and six others were injured. We have blight in neighborhoods, and former councilwoman Von Ziegler texted me a newspaper article where I was sitting on a step and it was talking about blight in the neighborhoods in 2014, and this is 2023. And the blight I was talking about, there's a neighborhood called Westover Hill, and they have four abandoned houses that I would like to see either rehab for affordable housing or one be tore down, which is, I found that Tony Williams, our code enforcement, has contacted the owners of that property. Road repairs, you hear people, I went to Parsonsburg, we talked about the roads are being, is in disarray, bumping roads, tying your car up, and, well, we know how the roads are in the county. Recycling, people request the recycling bins be put back at the Civic Center and on Nanticoke Road, and we need to address that. And one important position that we need in this county is a grants writer. And a grants writer is the person to address some of these issues. And a grants writer is the person to address some of these issues. There's money out here that our governor, Westmore, our secretary of state, the former mayor, Jake Day, we need to apply for some of this money that can address some of these issues. There are senior citizen issues. We talked about, we went to a senior citizen facility. They can't even get to the management because she has a caution and stop sign right in her door, and one resident had to sleep on the couch for two days before she could get in her apartment. So these are some of the things that are going on in our community. I said, "Instead, the council disagrees with the appointment of two staff members, which is our right to do according to the Wycomico County Charter." And we wind up being the bad guys according to some. Social media has been used on a one-sided view, but there's always two sides to every story. My question is, what is about these two people that we have not confirmed that makes the administration so determined to keep these persons? The council has asked to bring forth other candidates for these positions, but has not been done. Instead, we were expected to pay, approve $150,000 for a lawyer. We had a lawyer, but was fired because advice that was given did not sit well with the administration. We did have an outside lawyer. He was from Baltimore. I can't think of his name, but, because when I first came on, and he gave some advice, and all of a sudden, he was gone. So I think that we can be, like I said before, we can be disagreed, but don't be disagreeable. And what we've done, we have almost declared war on this particular issue, and it doesn't look good. It doesn't look good at all. And it seems like, it's like a small child wants her way or no way, and you can't do that in government. We're here representing the people that we, that voted for us, and they didn't vote for us to be fighting among ourselves, because before, the county executive was sitting beside me. Now she chooses to sit out in the audience. She was always welcome here at this table, but she chooses to sit in the audience. And I don't know the reason why, but, because I would be talking to her. I'm not mad with her. I don't, I'm not fighting with her. I disagree with her. That's my, that's my point. I want to make sure people, as I said before, I treat people the way I want to be treated. And I treat people with utmost respect. Even if I disagree with you, I will always laugh and joke with you after this meeting's over, because I like people, and that's why I'm here. I like people, and I like projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Any other council comments? Shane?
Mr. Benson, the county executive mentioned that there's an opinion written by Mr. Mitchell. Is there a reason why we haven't provided that to her, or what?
I don't know that I've seen an opinion that's been written by Mr. Mitchell. You'd have to ask Ms. Hurley.
I thought, that's what I heard herself.
She said that. I'm just saying, I don't think I've seen a written opinion from Mr. Mitchell. I know what Mr. Mitchell's opinion is, but it's from a verbal conversation. I don't know that I've seen a written opinion in a formal sense.
If there is one, is that something we could provide the executive's office?
I believe that is attorney-client privileged, so that's up to Mr. Benson and the council.
Okay. All right.
Any other comments? Jeff?
Well, first of all, I just want to thank everybody for attending tonight and sharing all your perspectives, whether we, you agree with us or don't agree with us. It's important that we hear everything. And I know, when I'm trying to make a decision on something, I take all forms of communication into the decision process. I believe Mr. Staples referenced a email that was sent out, canned email, and he's correct. I sent a canned response to a canned email. The problem that I had with the canned email was there was no basis for the argument. It simply said, "I want you to not override the veto." No reason given. But pick up the phone, call me, send me an email, let's have a talk about it. So I appreciate the communication, both phone, text, email, Facebook Messenger, however you get ahold of us. I've been asked occasionally, "Why can't the council get along with the executive?" And my answer's pretty easy. It's lack of communication. I think we've heard claims of an open-door policy, but yet I have a copy of an email that was sent to the council by the executive on January the 16th, saying that we have to give a three-day notice along with a written agenda. That's not an open-door policy. That's scheduling a meeting, which, in the work that we all do, that's absolutely the way to do it. I don't think any of us want people barging in their office unannounced, maybe when you already have somebody in there expecting to talk to you. So scheduling a meeting, that's, that's the way to do it. I've also been asked, "Why don't you support the executive?" I said, "I do support the executive. There are times that I don't agree with the executive, and there's, that's a difference. Just because I support you doesn't mean I have to agree with you." And we should be able to agree to disagree, have a civil conversation, and move along. My, my votes in the past, tonight, next council meeting, the ones after that, I simply look at, are we following the charter? Are we doing what we say we're supposed to do? It's that simple. I don't have to agree with the charter or disagree with it. Doesn't matter. We're following it as it's written. If something needs to be changed, that's a whole separate discussion, but we need to follow the charter as it's written right now. And again, whatever everybody's hearing in the media, on social media, check your facts. Pick up the phone. Send an email. Check everything out. Get both sides of the story. There's always two sides. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments? Joe?
I want to, I want to remark on some of the accusations that were made at the podium tonight. I'll let Mr. Cannon decide if he wants to do an investigation. I've never heard of, for the people trying to bribe politicians. I've never heard of a politician bribing a citizen, but anyway. You know, we all took an oath when we got elected. Some of us have been elected more than once, Josh, John, myself. The oath is something I take pretty serious. Took an oath 20, 20 years ago to a young lady, and I've lived up to that oath, and I've lived up to the oath that I take in this room every four years. I don't like being accused of something that I didn't say. In the last meeting, I was accused of something I didn't say, after I gratefully accepted an invitation to someone's event, and found that that event was used to try to attack me. But anyway, I'll let that go. You know, as elected officials, when we run for an election, a lot of, a lot of promises get made. A lot of promises get made when you're knocking on doors, when you're at events. The big surprise comes is after you get elected, and you find out that there's a checks and balances system to what, how the government runs. It's just not your way. You don't get, get your way all the time. Be great. Man, how many times, John, how many times have we been beat on, on votes up here? It didn't go our way. You know? I asked for a postponement. "No, it didn't go our way." I didn't get up at the podium and raise cane and jump up and down and kick my feet. You know? You lose some. You know? You hope to make a difference, but what you do. So anyway, it don't always work out. You know, you're not going to get your way all the time. I'll go back to the last election. So people ask why we're having our issues. It goes back to some of the things Jeff said. You know, our first appointment was our director of administration. Seven members of the council appointed the director of administration. Okay? Everything's good. But what I don't understand is now, for whatever reason, we've hired, or I say "we," I'm not going to use, I'm not going to use that word. The county executive's office has hired the former director of administration at, I think, what is it, $78 an hour, something like that? Why do we need a director of administration, a former director of administration, which I don't imagine he's going to work full-time, but if he did, that'd be $160,000 a year. So we got 100, what, $30,000 for the director of administration. We got 160 for the assistant for, from, a prior.
120, I think, for the assistant.
127 for the assistant. Whatever. Okay. We got the prior director of administration, then we've got the director of administration, we got the assistant and the director of administration. How many directors of administration do we need? Okay. So all the conservatives out here in the, in our county, which I can count some of you in the room, okay, worry about money being spent. I do too. I've sat up here a long time. I've supported the revenue cap. People, believe me, that's been a fight the whole time I've been here. You know, somebody's always on TV saying, "We may need to address the revenue cap in the future." You know? You know, the old saying is, "The more you give the government to spend, the more they're going to spend." Well, anyway, when the county executive took office, she put two people in her office. One as a, I guess, a legislative aide, was that correct? And then another one as a public information officer? Okay, okay. Positions that weren't approved, by the way, that weren't even in, were they in the charter? They weren't in the charter?
Yes.
Okay. PIOs, okay. But it wasn't ever presented to the council, correct?
PIO is in the organizational charter. It's not in the, it's not in the charter. It's in the, it's in the organizational charter.
And it's not in the budget?
It's not in the budget.
Okay. So she pays, she pays those two people out of other departments. Now, how can you have correct financing practices? And we've been through this before, because this happened a few years ago out at the landfill, one of the situations we had out there, where they were paying, the landfill was paying county roads, or the county roads was paying landfill to do something. How can we have correct financial procedures when you're paying people out of the wrong departments to fulfill a job? You put somebody working in the county executive's office, but you're paying them out of finance or you're paying them out of county roads or wherever you're paying them from. So anyway, we had those two employees. I guess I'm not going to go back to the other point about why do we have three directors or two directors of administration and assistant director of administration that we've not But we've got five delegates. Carl, thank you for being here tonight. We've got five delegates, and we've got two senators. Now, these are the people we pick up the phone and call, and Carl just come up to the podium and ask us, you know, if we had any issues that we needed to talk about. Why did we pay $20,000 to a lobbyist? And when I read the contract, that contract is exactly what our delegates and our senators do. So there's 20 more thousand dollars that the county executive signed off on. So, you know, we, we hear all this conservatism. We've heard it for years, right? But if you sit here and you look, and you see some of the things that's going on in that office, it makes you shake your head. I don't think citizens know about all this that's going on. I don't think if they realize that. You know, think about this. $78 an hour? Okay. Multiply that out at 40 hours a week. Now, I don't think he's going to be working 40 hours a week, but, but we've already got a county, county. I won't, I keep going on about this, but anyway, that's all I had, Mr. Cannon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mumford. Jeff?
Yeah. I just want to say, thanks, everyone, for coming out and for folks who were paying attention. I wanted to echo Delegate Anderton, of course, thanking the current, there's a couple of former and current candidates that are in the, in the audience. Special shout-out to our former councilman in the back, Ernie Davis. Good to see you here, as well as Angela Davis and Megan Outland, the city council of Salisbury. I do also want to echo Delegate Anderton on making sure that we've got the budget and legislative priorities put together to get to the, to get to our representatives in enough time. Obviously, it's, you know, it's, we're going into the fall, and legislative session starts pretty soon. So I just want to make sure that we, as a county, have all that wrapped up and figured out, and that we all feel comfortable together on what we're going forward with. So I really appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. Anderton. And last thing I just want to say, I just want to bring up, so this past weekend, my niece finished her cancer treatments, and we had a, my brother had a ceremony, or kind of a get-together in his yard, and I just want to bring up a little bit of kindness that I was very proud to see. They're, they're famous, my family, my brothers, my niece and his wife, they're, they love El Primo Taqueria in North Salisbury. And so they reached out to them and said, "Hey, do you mind, you know, would you come and cater our event? We're going to have a little backyard get-together." You know, and so they did. They came out. At the end of it, you know, they felt primo, said, "Hey, don't worry about the bill. We got this." So if you can, please support them. I think it's always, always important to show, you know, kindness and realize that there's kindness everywhere. There's folks who are not trying to get attention for it, and they weren't either. That's why I'm going to bring it up here. So please support them, and remember, kindness is at the heart of what we do in this county. We are a kindness county, kindness city. We want to continue moving in that direction. That's how we'll get things done together. So, thank you.
What was the name of the restaurant again?
El Primo Taqueria.
El Primo Taqueria.
Yeah.
Say that twice, just right.
I just want, I just want to give another plug. That'll be nice. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to say, thanks, guys, for coming out. I know we all have a difference of opinions in how we interpret the charter, and I, maybe I'll start calling you Sister Shani. But, you know, I, when I made my decision, I did read everything thoroughly, and that's the way I'm, I'm going to stick to it. I don't want to see the county spend a lot of money over, over something we could have a retired judge do. But Mr. Wilber has a written opinion. The council does not, according to Shane, and are, are legal. So a written opinion is his golden versus verbal. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I don't think I said he doesn't have an opinion.
That's what I heard.
I asked if we had a written opinion and if she could have it.
No, a written opinion is what I meant.
And we do have a written opinion.
We do.
We do.
Just contradicting Paul Wilber's opinion, or?
That was emailed to you, Mr.?
Yes, I know, but it doesn't contradict Paul. We'll talk about it later.
Under presidential comments, I get tired of trying to rehash the same thing. Again, thank you, everybody, for coming. Full house, it's great. And I try not to rehash a lot of things, but it surprises me sometimes when I feel that really something is so very, very, very simple, and I feel like some people don't get it. I think Jeff had made the comment about what he reads on, on Facebook occasionally, or people who appear to have be, have a bias created because they simply have not really reached out for the other side. Some of the people that have come up to this podium, I've never had one phone call with any of those individuals. I'd love to talk to them, because I'd love to try to clarify to them exactly, you know, what the council's true position is. And I don't get on the Facebook. I guess somebody will send me a screenshot and things like that, but I, I stay away from that. There was, there was a blog that was set up a few years ago. No longer really work anymore. I didn't go on that site for two years. Wasn't productive. So, anyway, I'm going to try to make this very simple. I'm trying to make it very quick for you. But from my perspective, the executive presented two names to the county council in a closed session. That was the request of the executive. It wasn't any type of a circumstance where they felt too intimidated to ask the president of the council to put it on the agenda in a legislative session. It wasn't a case where the exec, where it was requested and the president of the council said, "No, we're not going to put it in a legislative session." Never happened. It was requested by a closed session, and that, as a courtesy, that's what the council did. They met with the executive on two different occasions. They met with the executive on two different occasions in reference to these two employees, and we had a very good meeting with it. Unfortunately, the council, there were reasons, there were very good reasons, that the council did not feel it was necessary. It was the best interest of the county to move forward with these two individuals, just didn't feel they were properly qualified. That was six out of seven members of the council that felt that. So, you know, we shared that with the executive. We're very straightforward about it. No one ever came back with us again to submit it in the legislative session because that still is a privilege of the executive to submit it in the legislative session. That was never done. These two individuals were simply hired. So you have two people that were hired that had not been approved through the process where the county council was required to approve this. The executive made the comment tonight that one was hired as an acting deputy director and the council didn't even have any authority to say one way or the other whether that person was authorized. Well, that's because the position of an acting deputy director doesn't exist in Wycomico County. There are no acting deputy director positions recognized in any documentation throughout Wycomico County because there's no such thing. We recognize a director, we recognize a deputy director, we recognize an acting director. There is no recognition. This is a position that was simply made up. I think Mr. Wilber, when we asked him about that, simply said, "Well, the charter's silent on it." Well, I guess it is silent. And if we passed legislation or another charter amendment to include an acting deputy director, well, the next executive might say, "Well, I'm going to hire them as an acting acting deputy director." So you understand, from my impression, without, I think it's kind of foolish to begin trying to, you know, go in that direction, and I think it's also somewhat misleading. But that's part of what was happening. You know, we're talking about a quarter of a million dollars in salaries, a quarter of a million dollars in salaries on these two employees. And the county council said, "No, we don't think they're qualified for a quarter of a million dollars in salaries." You know, I think some of the perception is that some of it's on the job training with, under this scenario. And I don't think anybody in this room or anybody in this county would want to hire people at a quarter of a million dollars and have on-the-job training. It doesn't make any sense. So, again, these are the circumstances that came about. The council said, "No, we don't think they're qualified." We had really good reasons. So, again, there's no personal agenda here. Not to forget that it's been said many times tonight, the county council, when names were submitted in legislative session by the executive, including Paul Wilber, including Pamela, and including Bunky and others, when the names were submitted in legislative session, the council agreed. Thirty-five times we agreed for these appointments. But then we have two appointments where the council doesn't agree, and all of a sudden it appears that we're seeing, in my opinion, we're seeing subversion where there's techniques being made saying, "Oh, well, maybe this process wasn't filed properly or followed properly, and that's why we're in litigation." And I say, "Let's just get back to the basics." The council, six members of the council said, "They're not qualified." I think we have just as much of common sense in recognizing whether an individual is qualified or not as an executive does, or as any one of you in this room. And that was our opinion. Six said, "No, it is not going to work." But that didn't happen. That's not where it was left. So, you know, we operate as a legislative body, and we operate as a legislative body of seven, and that's what our obligation is, as a checks and balances system. We hear a lot of talk about the Constitution. The seven principles of the Constitution, one of those says, "There must be a system of checks and balances," where one department checks the other department and keeps it in line. That's why you have the departments, and that's why the principles establish that. So this is the legislative body, and we operate as a body of seven. You have six of the seven members who said, "No, there should have been nothing more to say except let's move on." And I think that's where we should be right now. We should move on. I don't care about attorneys. I don't want to spend $150,000. I want to just find two people who everyone can agree on are very qualified people to manage Wycomico County. I'll leave it with that. So I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work session followed by a closed work session pursuant to the general provisions, Article Section 3-305b8, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation to protect the county's legal position.
We've got a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Take five.
Meeting is adjourned, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Five minutes.
We're reconvenienced the Wycomico County Council for legislative session 2023-17, September 5th, 2023. First item on the open work session is a proposed amendments to the classification and pay plan for the state's attorney's office. We have Jamie Dykes, our state's attorney for Wycomico County, here. Pleased to see you here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. Pleased to be here and here to answer whatever questions I can. As you know, the request is rather small in nature, but it's allowed to allow for recruitment and retention. The funds are already within the state's attorney's office budget. Those are the requests I'd like to make. I think I've only ever made one request to increase the budget.
Right.
So I'm here to answer any questions or concerns that the council might have.
So these funds are already in your budget?
They are. So I'm proposing converting a part-time, a 50% ASA position to summer intern, 2L, people who are in their second year of law school. So I'd love to start recruiting for those soon and then to reallocate an additional $10,000 total that's already in the budget.
Once you hire these people, are the funds going to go back to where they were or...
No. The proposal is that those two additional positions, those intern positions, would stay and will make those an annual occurrence.
Okay. Next year's budget, you readjust it?
Yes.
Yeah. Any other questions? Yes.
When these interns are hired, might they potentially become actual employees?
That is the hope of the state's attorney. I imagine that's the hope of all residents of Wycomico County. You know, career prosecutors make, in my opinion, the best prosecutors. Their commitment to the community, so we're hoping to attract some solid 2L students. And then when they move here for a few months, they're going to realize how great our community is and what a nice place it is to live.
You may want to reach out to Tri-County Council and Lower Shore Workforce Alliance because I remember in one of their meetings a little while back, they were talking about the state of Maryland is trying to create incentives with internship programs where they're helping to supplement the funding on that.
Okay.
It would be nothing more than a phone, I'll make the phone call for you if you want, since, I know, I'll make the call and then I'll let you know, okay?
Sure.
It doesn't affect anything today, yeah.
That'd be great. That'd be great. It's, yeah, we think we're all familiar with shortages in staff, especially in public service positions, so any help we can get would be great that way.
Any other questions from anybody here? Yes, Ms. Hurley?
So I didn't see a pay grade for the two new positions. Do you have that determined yet? And did you complete position description questionnaires for these new positions?
So I'm so glad Ms. Olin is here.
And we're glad Mrs. Hurley is here.
So they would be treated like part-time employees, and part-time employees, since they're not a full-time position, they would be treated like part-time employees and thus they are not on the grading scale. They would be funded as a part-time employee, set up in the system as a part-time employee without the benefit structure of a full-time employee since they are interns and would be for a short duration. And then the other two positions that she's looking to reallocate the funding for, then it would change the position description or position control document and up the salaries for those two positions. So again, it would be kind of creating part-time positions that don't fall on the position control document, but again, they are taking a position that's already part-time and making it to part-time and then reallocating salary.
Okay. So just so I'm clear, but she is creating two new positions that have to be added to that paying classification plan?
So it would be like creating part-time employees at Rec and Parks. Those don't get added to the paying classification plan.
So, Mr. Wilber, then, would this not require a public hearing?
Yep.
Does she yeses and no, it does not?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
It would not require a public hearing, is that correct?
Yes. That's correct.
All right. We're going to go with that. Mr. Wilber says it would not require a public hearing. Thank you. Satisfied, Mrs. Hurley?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
We can put this back on for the next meeting as a resolution since it does not need a public hearing.
Okay, that's great news.
Council okay with this?
Okay.
All right.
Mark it down as something else approved by the county council that came from the executive's office.
So we'll put it on the next meeting, the 19th.
September 19th.
September 19th.
Would you like me to appear?
You certainly are welcome to appear anytime you wish, but I don't see where that's going to be.
I can be here to support the, I can...
I'm probably good, I have other things. I mean, just a couple, but, no, I'm happy.
It doesn't require.
I will, thank you.
I can be here for the budget amendment aspect of it, and I will, so her memo would support then the budget memo and the resolution that we would put forward.
I'll rephrase it as Mr. Wilber might, "Yes, you do not have to be here."
But we'd love to see her.
Yes.
Well, I appreciate that, and I love seeing all of you always, but I will, if my schedule allows, I certainly will. I don't, I appreciate the business of the council and appreciate your support this way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You also, you also.
Next item we have on the open work session is a proposed amendment to the fiscal year 2024 capital budget for Piedmont parking lot. Mr. Rudy, if you could just announce yourself for the public. Thank you.
Tony Rudy, Airport Director.
Thank you. You have the floor or Ms. Olin?
So this is kind of the next step. As council is aware, with the CARES funding with the airport, we said we would come to council every time we want to make an amendment to the grant funding. This is that amendment. The federal government may or may not require us to sign an amendment to the document, but we are presenting to council, and so we're asking for a resolution to allow us to sign if it happens. And it is kind of the last piece of the funding that we need. At the last meeting, council approved, last meeting or meeting before, I've lost track of time, I apologize, approved a resolution to amend the capital budget for the Piedmont parking lot. This would get us the last bit of funding to be able to complete that project.
Any questions? Everybody okay? Ms. Hurley, where...
This one does require a public hearing.
Yeah, but typically, it's only one-week advertisement, right?
That is correct.
So can it go on the next agenda?
Sure, certainly. Yeah, we have the public hearing and, what's an introduction, right?
No, it's just a...
Or it's a resolution?
Resolution.
All right, good.
So it's public hearing and adoption.
Public hearing and adoption. Okay, good. We'll expedite.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Rudy.
Thank you.
See you, Pam.
See ya, thank you.
All right. That concludes the open work session for Wycomico County Council. We entertain a motion going to close. All in favor, thank you.